All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for coming. Sorry about the rescheduling. I too had COVID, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So we had to reschedule when it was scheduled that I was on vacation. But all good now. So before we start, I wanted to take a minute to introduce Megan Ryan. So Megan, if you want to stand up. Megan Ryan is our new manager at the Terrace. Megan's an RN. She's new to us, but not new to the system. Prior to coming here, she was at Skyler Ridge for 20 years, which is one of our skilled nursing facilities. And has been an RN for 25 years. So comes with a great wealth of knowledge and a lot of experience. So doing something a little bit different from the skilled nursing world, but definitely catching on quickly. So anything you wanted to say?
Oh, just wanted to say hi to everybody. And you have a beautiful campus here. I live down at the Terrace, you'll see a lot of me. But just thank you for being patient and kind and, um, thank you.
All right. Actually, I think it's just me today, so you get me the whole time. And I wanted to give an update on our open house. So we did have an open house on the 14th on Sunday. So thank you, everybody, for your help. And sorry for the inconvenience and moving things around. But it was very successful. We had about 120 people who came through. So we ended up showing, you know, our common area, showing off the dining room, this space, the pool, the gym, the exercise studio. And then we had two apartments and a cottage that we could show. So it was very successful. And we had, you know, a bus going around the campus. And so from that, I know we've had at least two people that went on the waiting list from, you know, just coming for the tour. So the sheer volume is nice, but it's also nice to see people take that next step. So that was very good. And we had, so we did it a little bit different this year. So we did it, all the housing sites did their open house on the same day. Before, we would each take, you know, pick a day, whatever worked for us. Now, the advantage of all of us doing it on the same day was we could pool our advertising dollars. So it was advertised everywhere. I think we had a radio spot. I don't know if we had TV. I don't think we had TV, but we definitely had a radio spot, newspaper ad. So, you know, we could, you know, get the, you know, the marketing dollar, the most for that. So again, thank you, everybody, for that. Some new business I wanted to talk about was we did send out an emergency message on the 24th. So it went out to 211 recipients, 157 confirmed, 74%. So that's great. So for those of you who don't know what I'm talking about, it's our way to push out some emergency notifications. So most of you have signed up to get it one way or another, either email, cellphone, or a phone call. With the phone calls, we did notice people were complaining that it was garbled and hard to hear. So that happened the first time, too. So we did get some reports that if you confirmed with that phone call, it got clearer after you confirmed. But I suppose you would have to understand what they're saying in order to confirm.
You could hear the noise, you knew where it was.
Yes. But the other methods seem to go through smoothly. And I know Kathy is working with Point Click Care, correct? Or the representative for the platform for which we pushed that out to see what we can do about that phone call piece. So still a work in progress, but it's going pretty well. Any questions on that?
What if you weren't there when they called? So you couldn't push the button?
It sends a reminder for 24 hours.
It's so, the question was if you weren't there when they called and to confirm and push the button. And then Kathy said it will send a reminder for 24 hours.
That's why they're on the next day.
Yeah. Okay. Corey, do you want to give an update on Spectrum in-house channel?
No.
You didn't even take a breath.
I know, I know. So, uh, yes. It started out, we thought it was just a few TVs that were having problems getting the in-house channel. And they all happened to be Samsung TVs at the beginning. So I worked with Samsung and they couldn't find an issue. And then we started having other models not getting the channel. So I have worked with Spectrum. They have been here twice, looked. It's not us, it's the in-house company, the Unigess system. So I worked with them. They're like, if it was our system, then nobody would be getting it. There's something going on with Spectrum. So back to Spectrum I go. So they came out, they sent a new guy, which in some way is frustrating because every time you work with somebody new, they have to look at the system new again. But also, it's kind of nice because it's a fresh set of eyes looking at the system. And this guy, I think, finally got it right. So what they had discovered is while, when we rolled out this new system and the new, what's called an encoder or the insertion gear, which allows us to get 3.1, 3.2, some of the older TVs that still had the QAM tuners and were able to get that are not able to get a true good 1080 image on their TV. This is probably right over most of your heads. But trust me, when I tell you I'm telling you the truth. Larry will back me up, right Larry? Right, I'm on the money right now. So, um, but those of you who had to get brand-new TVs because your old TVs didn't have the special tuner in it, you're able to get the 1080, which is now being pushed out for the in-house channel. So right now, honestly, what we have to do is kind of similar to going back to like radio days. We have to get the signal turned back to that 720 ratio that's going to push out. And then everybody will get it again. Because new TVs can get old 720 and old TVs can get the older 720. So I reached out to Unigess yesterday when I was here. They got back to me today and said, "We can do that, but Spectrum has to turn down what they've got coming through first." So Kathy and I, before lunch, called Spectrum. We got a very nice gentleman, Scott, out of Orlando area, who said, "Let me call you back in about 20, 30 minutes. I've got a guy here right onsite at our office who's, he works with a lot of our insertion companies like you. And he'll know the answer if we actually, if your encoder can tune back that or not." And now it's 3:09 and Scott has not returned our call yet. So I think after this, I'll call again. And we'll get a technician out here who can look at the encoder and make sure that that encoder can be tuned back to a 720. Anybody completely confused now? Yes.
Just a question. If you tune it back, will that impact the, um, the other material that's supposed to come through at a certain level?
No, because the only thing that encoder takes care of is our two insertion channels. It doesn't affect any other channel that Spectrum pushes through. It's basically the little translator for what Unigess puts out that translates it to allow it to show on our TVs here. Any other questions? I am, since I'm up here, I'll let you guys know today is my last day here for about two weeks. I'll be back on the 14th, going away to Spectrum School to learn how, to learn how to run the company. So I will be away. But Ashley and I already put on October 16th another travelogue series from this vacation. So look for that. And I'm hoping it's much better than my misadventures in Iceland.
Where are you going?
Greece. We're going to Greece. Greece and Turkey. Yes. Who knows, maybe? So no, we're giving up Kathy's name.
Yeah, you have my number.
He has Kathy's number. Yes.
So is there any number now that we can try to see if it's working on our TV or not?
No. I mean, if you weren't getting 3.1, 3.2 before, you won't until they dial this back. So, and then once we know, I guess we'll use carrier pigeons to let everyone know.
Use the app.
Yes, use the app. If you don't, if you don't have access to the TV, another reason to use the app. Because you get all the information right there.
All right. So our caller ID issue, I think in most circumstances, has been fixed. So the caller ID issue was, it was coming up Trinity Health, so nobody was answering the phone. So it should now be coming up Beverwood. If you are, or people you are calling are not seeing that or seeing something different, please let us know. What we have to provide is within 24 hours, we need the date, the time, and the phone number and the carrier. That's what we have to report off and put in a ticket for them to fix it. So if you are experiencing that, or the people you're calling are experiencing that, let us know. Okay. There was a change in breakfast. Breakfast is being served 8:30 to 10:30. Just making an announcement. Okay. In the west wing, hot water, there was an issue with, not hot water, well, it was an issue with hot water, but cold water was not coming through. So that has been resolved. It did take a little time. And I assure you, we had somebody here just about every single day trying to figure it out. We thought it was one thing, replaced one thing, and it wasn't that. Ultimately, it was a mixing valve that needed to be replaced. So is anybody in the west having problems anymore?
Fixed.
Fixed, okay, good. We can take that off the list. Sorry it took so long. Apparently, our plumbing is, um...
Works for Spectrum.
Yeah. Designed by Spectrum.
Yes.
Okay, so renovation updates. So we have installed our magazine racks in the library. We have a few pieces of artwork that are still pending. After we went through everything, we had some holes we needed to fill in. Library chairs are getting casters on the bottom of them, so they're easier to move in the library. Valances are still pending on the second floor, right? Are they, yes? So valances still need to go up there. Shuffleboard court and putting green. We have secured vendors for both of those. I'm not sure when the work is going to begin. We have a meeting again this week. So it's out there, the quotes are there. We're just waiting for them to start. Next is going to be, the reception desk is going to be renovated slightly, improving the workflow a lot more so in the back that you don't necessarily see. And then we're going to be doing the lobby flooring. So when we started this project, the lobby flooring was somewhat new. So now it's not. So we added that on to the project as well. And also, not affecting this building, but then we're going to begin work at the Terrace as well. And just doing some new carpeting, painting, a little refresh there as well. Any questions on the renovations? Yes?
Did you decide if we need gliders under the dining room chairs in the back, on the two back legs?
So they have wheels, it's about dining room chairs. So the dining room chairs have wheels in the front.
The old ones had gliders on the back.
Did we look at the dining room chairs?
I don't remember this.
We can actually bring it up when she's here on Thursday. We can bring her one. Do they need gliders on the back? Are we, are people having trouble moving the dining room chairs?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. So COVID, we've had a lot of COVID happening in the past week. We currently have 13 residents here at Independent that have COVID. So we'll put out a memo today. I was actually typing it before this meeting. And then several residents exposed as a result of the 13 positive residents. So again, you know, some people who were positive last week are going to be falling off this week. But this is where it is right now. This is the total number. So our current rules and regulations is directed by our medical director for our whole division is from the date somebody tests positive, it is a five-day quarantine in their apartment, cottage, wherever that may be. Five-day quarantine and then a mask for two additional days, but no longer needing to be quarantined. If you've been exposed to somebody with COVID, there is no quarantine, but there is a requirement to wear a mask for five days. That means that you can't eat in the dining room for five days because you can't eat with a mask. So those are the current COVID rules that we have in place. We do have a meeting this Thursday. COVID is on the rise everywhere. So we're not the only ones that are having this uptick. So I'll just make sure everybody's doing the same. And if there's any changes to current policy, I'll let you know. Any questions on COVID? Yes?
How severe? Have people been very ill with this? Or is it, I mean, on how you rate it. If you have COVID, you feel bad.
So the question is how severe. You know, nobody's needed to go to the hospital, but it's definitely varied in how sick people feel. I know, I can speak for myself. I was sick, I was sick for a good two, three days. And then I felt a little bit better. But I was sick, flu-like sick. But some people have been reporting just mild symptoms, too. So it's varied. Any other, yeah?
If you develop COVID, where do you go to be? When you think you have it, where do you go to be tested? And what do they give you for it?
So the question is if you have COVID, where are you going to be tested? And what do they give you for it? The first question about testing, we do have some test supplies. We don't have an unlimited supply. But we do have some testing supplies. So you can call, you can either call the front desk, call Sulaber. If Sulaber's not there, you can call the front desk and we can either get you a test or test you. And what to take for it, that would be between you and your physician. You would call your physician to see if they wanted to treat you with anything further.
Do you know whether you can still get tests free with Medicare card?
Uh, I don't know. The question was can you get tests free with Medicare cards? I don't know if you can anymore.
I asked and they said no.
No, okay. So really, what, since COVID began, we've really been getting a supply regularly at our nursing home and at our assisted living from the state. So that's what we were using here because we had enough really for the campus on what they were providing us. So the state is not providing those free kits to those settings anymore. But we still have a good supply. So, you know, it's just not unlimited. I can't guarantee once we run out that we have more coming, but... Any other questions? Okay. And then really, even besides, you know, the COVID protocol, even if you're feeling sick, the recommendation is just, you know, stay away from activities, stay away from dining if you're not feeling well, COVID or not. So, but yes, definitely on the rise. We're seeing it a little bit everywhere. Okay.
How was it in the Terrace?
Uh, none. We have one employee who tested positive yesterday, but no residents. No residents in the nursing home. But we did have a nursing home call yesterday. And I think of our seven nursing homes, four of them have, you know, some degree. A few here and there. Yeah. Okay. The photo directories have been distributed. There's more available at the front desk, correct? If you need one. We're going to be doing a safety day. So we have FOBS that are going to be available. I think I announced at a previous meeting, FOBS at the main entrances. So we're going to be distributing the FOBS on August 20th. We're also going to just be coordinating, you know, maybe doing some presentations on resident safety, things to do in a fire, things to do if we lose power. We also are ordering two light bulbs for everybody. And I know this is not a lot, but it's, it's two light bulbs that we can hand out to everybody that are automatically just charging when you use them day-to-day. And then when the power goes out, you can flip just a light on the light bulb and at least there's light for a little period of time. So we've ordered enough for everyone to have at least two. And along those lines, generators, good segue. So we have, somebody's onsite today. And they're actually looking at the Terrace and assessing that to see what we would need at the Terrace because currently, the generators are just in common areas in the kitchen there as well, similar to here. So we really need a whole picture for the whole campus. So he's onsite and expected to get us that information next week. So we have all of our information and then can prioritize where generators can be upgraded or added. Any questions on that? Yes?
What are those light bulbs, for lamps or what?
Yeah, for lamps.
So you just replace your regular light bulb with this new one?
Yeah, so we're, yeah, you would put this light bulb in whatever lamps you choose, maybe one in the bedroom, one in the living room. And then when the power goes out, it will be fully charged because it charges as you're using it every day.
How long does it last?
I'm not sure. It was a good amount of time when we looked at it, but I can't remember the exact...
It's a good idea.
It was like two hours, I thought.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a few hours, but I don't know the exact. So, um, some other updates. We are still, the sewer building, there were some questions about what we were going to plant around the sewer building. We're not going to do any planning. It is going to be a fence. So we've kind of finalized those plans with the town of Bethlehem. So we'll get something up. I think we were just waiting on their final approval.
How do you win?
When?
Yes.
The fence goes up? I think we're going to be doing it. So we can do it as long as they're okay with it. Last time, he asked for another drawing, I think, of where, of what was going to go up. So I'll find out where we're at with it.
Thank you.
Yes?
I have, Tim said that he was getting, um, getting quotes.
To do the fencing?
Right.
Okay. So we must have the approval. So now we're getting the quotes to put the fencing in. As far as the erosion study, and that's going to be, that's the, um, near the nature trail. So we're waiting on, they're getting quotes from different vendors to actually do the work. I don't think the work is going to be all that involved. But now, we're getting the quotes from them. It's, the engineer is the project manager for it. So they're responsible, you know, for getting the quotes and overseeing the project. So we're still waiting on that to get the final vendor for it. So this is, this is the erosion issue. It probably came up about a year ago where we've always been putting lawn clippings and different things on one side of the hill there, near the nature trail. The town of Bethlehem said we can. And required, well, they required us to bring in an engineer to assess it. The engineer said that some of the material needs to be moved. So it's going to be moved from that hill somewhere else on campus. So, so we're just waiting. Once they decided what the scope of the work was, the town of Bethlehem signed off on it. Now we're just waiting to get the engineer onsite to do the work. Yes?
Are they going to replace the lounge furniture and carpet?
The question is, are they going to replace the lounge furniture and carpet? So by lounge, do you mean the lobby? We're replacing the carpeting and flooring, not the furniture. Yes? Yeah, Lori?
Is there any progress on where the location of the compost heap in the garden is going to be?
No. Location of compost heap in the garden that's currently there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Move it sometime.
Okay. I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you after. Okay.
That's other side of the question about the relocation of the detritus on the, that's causing erosion problems. You said another site on campus. Do we know where that site is?
I don't, offhand. I think it's over, I don't know where it is going to be exactly, but I know it was approved to be on another location on campus. But I'm not sure where that location is. I want to say it's over in the backside there, but I'm not sure. Any other questions? Yes?
Different subject.
Yeah.
The, the lines by the charger in the west block don't need to be repainted yet. It's, because when you don't get the middle spot and you have to pop on the side, for my car, I can barely get the hose to get to the car. And it's very difficult.
Yeah. In case you couldn't hear, we need repainting of lines, especially around the electric car chargers is where it's most notable. But yes, we do have, we have a vendor, we have the quote. It's going to be fall when we do that. And it actually needs to be restripped everywhere. That location. And then we, we only resurfaced one part of the south lot. The other half of the south lot needs to be restripped, and so does our terrace, and so does our nursing home. So it's more than just that, but fall is the plan.
In the main courtyard then?
Yes, the main one as well. Yeah. Yes?
Painting, how about the outside doors?
Do we up that to the project, the outside doors?
I don't know.
They're badly needed.
It is. The question is the outside doors were where? I don't know who's doing it. But yes, we, I think we've gotten a quote for it. But it's one of those, I don't know if it's part of the project or one that we're doing.
And the other thing is the west lot with the hookups for the electric. We have sometimes people who are parking there who are not an electric vehicle.
Okay.
And we also had, I think it's fixed hopefully that the Beverwood car was there all weekend and taking up a spot.
Yeah, so the question was electric car, people parked in electric charging spots, so they shouldn't be. Put out a reminder. And the other question was the Beverwood car. The reason we had the Beverwood car there, usually we charge the Beverwood car at the Terrace charging port. And that one was broken, so we needed to charge it there. But I believe the Terrace one has been fixed. Has it? No.
One side.
One side has been fixed.
The one side is working, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, I guess Jeremy, he's the, the bus driver.
Okay. So they could use the one side at the Terrace for the Beverwood car. So it shouldn't need to be charged in the west. Yes?
I was just wondering if people not connected with Beverwood, can they come and just use the electric chargers here?
No.
Open to the public?
Oh, really?
No.
But they do.
We think they do.
They do.
They shouldn't be, no.
Should there be a sign up there?
It's on the app. It's on the app.
It's on the what?
It's on an app, a ChargePoint app. Shows where they are. If they have a ChargePoint.
Okay. So it's on the ChargePoint app that shows where all available chargers are, and ours are included. I don't know if there's any way to exclude that, but...
I think there is.
So we can start there and tell ChargePoint we don't want to be listed on the app. And then, secondly, yeah, we could always put signage up for residents only. Yeah. Yep. Any other questions? Yes?
Well, I'm just saying, no. I mean, I don't have any evidence one way or the other, but it seems like at least some of the people using it are aides. Are they allowed to or not?
No, they shouldn't be. Aides should not be using it either to charge.
Sometimes I've seen aides do it.
Yeah. And again, we can send out a reminder to the aide group. I know Sue periodically touches base with them and just let them know that, yeah, they shouldn't be. It should be for residents. Yes?
How do neighbors or the aides pay for this if they use the charger?
So to...
You have to have a swipe to unlock it.
You have to have a ChargePoint swipe card. Yep. To unlock the machine.
But you can't get it off the receiver. You can't unless you have a swiper.
She's saying you can't get it off...
You have to swipe in order to get it off, unlock. So they have to have some kind of an account to use it.
Right.
They don't really do that. What do you pay for it?
I didn't want to be so...
The issue? Yeah, yeah.
Yes?
What about residents who, friends, families still with it?
You still have to have a...
Again, they would still have to have the swipe card, but I would say no, that should be for residents, not for visitors either. Okay. Are we ready for a joke? All right. The local news station was interviewing an eighty-year-old lady because she had just gotten married for the fourth time. The interviewer asked her questions about her life and what it felt like to be marrying again at eighty. And then about her new husband's occupation. "He's a funeral director," she answered. "Interesting," thought the newsman. Then asked if she wouldn't mind telling him a little bit about her first three husbands. She paused and after a short time, a smile came to her face and she said, "Her first husband was a banker when she was in her twenties. Her second husband was a circus ringmaster in her forties and a preacher when she was in her sixties and now in her eighties, a funeral director." The interviewer looked at her quite astonished and asked why she married four men with such diverse careers. She smiled and explained, "I married one for the money, two for the show, three to get ready, and four to go." Thank you, guys. Have a good afternoon.